There are seats over here like when you go to church. They will have the staff in the back. Welcome to a very special evening. We're honoring so many of our wonderful staff. And it's great to see so many of their colleagues out there supporting them. And with that, we'll call a meeting to order. Uh, roll, uh, roll call please.
Dr. Corollino?
Here.
Mr. Daughtry?
Here.
Dr. Modrak?
Here.
Mr. Morella?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Ms. Zuckerman?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Present.
Uh, continue with the briefing, close session please.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of to attend all meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the act, the Monville Township Board of Education provided a public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location that was posted on the Monville Township Municipal Building, all Monville Public Schools, the Monville Public Library, the Monville Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, the district website, and advertised in the Daily Record, the board's official newspaper, on January tenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Ladies and gentlemen. Usually at this juncture, we have our high school representatives, but I see neither of them were even able to make it tonight, while either home studying or at various Superintendent's report, please.
Okay, um, I want to begin this evening by indicating that January is the month in which we recognize the service of our school board members. They serve on a volunteer basis, uh, no compensation. Um, and I'm very proud to serve with a board that, um, definitely has their heart in the right place. They serve quite selflessly and, uh, give substantial amounts of time towards making sure that we offer the best instructional program possible to the students here in Monville Township. So, I've given each of them a small little token, a little, uh, refrigerator magnet of our new, um, uh, district logo, um, but, um, I think a round of applause is in order to thank them.
Thank you very much for those kind words. I know it's a pleasure to serve here. I hope I speak for my colleagues. I know I speak for my colleagues, that this is a very rewarding experience, and it's a pleasure to work with the administration and actually the one for half that we have in the schools. I'm a little disappointed in Dr. Rodger. I thought there was like a hundred dollar bill in here, but it was just a magnet, you know?
Sorry about that. Um, so moving on to presentations, um, tonight is, is one of the, um, most enjoyable opportunities that we have at board meetings throughout the year because we have a chance to recognize those staff members within the district that have truly distinguished themselves and been selected by a panel within their individual schools as either the Teacher of the Year or the Educational Services Professional of the Year. Uh, so, you know, it's quite an honor to have that selection by your peers, and we really do have some outstanding candidates representing all seven of our schools. So, to kick things off, I'm gonna ask the principals to come up and introduce the two staff members in the high school. They have three honorees. It was a separate award at the high school level. Uh, but I'm gonna start off with Dr. Raj at Cedar Hill. If you could come forward and step to the mic and introduce, uh, your staff members that we're honoring this evening.
Good evening. At Cedar Hill, we are thrilled to honor two outstanding education professionals. One, Andrew Trillo, who's our Teacher of the Year, our PBA classroom Teacher of the Year, Special Education.
Thank you for this honor. We have certificates for you. How, do you wanna go down and present them?
Sure. And now our Educational Services Professional of the Year is Stephanie Guerilla, Genteel, Speech Therapy Specialist. Thank you very much.
Wonderful, thank you. Um, I'd like to ask Mrs. Cisneros to come down and introduce our honorees from Hilldale School. Good evening. I'd like to introduce our Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Lauren Work, who is our Special Education Resource Teacher. And Mr. Ian Twendell, our Visite Teacher, as our Educational Services Professional. For Malleview School, Dr. Kennedy will come on down and introduce your honoree.
Good evening. I'm extremely proud to introduce two extraordinary educators and equally wonderful young beings. Um, Ms. Jennifer Blanchard, who is our Teacher of the Year. And this is Shelby Neufert, Speech Therapist, Educational Specialist of the Year. Congratulations.
I will ask Mr. Misselli to come on down and introduce the winners from William Mason School.
Mr. Misselli was the, um, who's the boss, right? Tony Misselli was the, uh, baseball player and the nanny for, um, the TV show. Uh, William Mason is very excited and proud to present two Teacher of the Year Award winners. Our first professional is Educational Services Professional, Dr. Kelly Goodwood. Our Teacher of the Year, Special Education Teacher, Meredith Wallston.
Thank you, Mr. Malu James. Sorry, I have too many names spinning around up here. Okay, um, for Woodmont School, Ms. Jazgadita.
Woodmont is very proud to recognize our Teacher of the Year, fifth grade teacher, Mrs. Stacey McCorse. And our Educational Services Professional of the Year, our Reading Specialist, Instructional Coach, Ms. Laura Kennedy.
Mr. Misselli, if you could come and forward and make our introductions for our Lusar staff.
Good evening. I'm absolutely honored to be able to introduce our two wonderfully dedicated teachers and professionals to you this evening. I'd like to start with our Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Nicole Brunt, Special Education.
And I'd like to present our Educational Services Professional, our Speech Teacher, Mrs. Jessica.
And last but not least, I'll ask Mr. Sanford to come down and, uh, introduce the honorees for Monville Township High School. And if you, uh, could also explain a little bit about your third award that, um, the high school presents.
Sure, I'll actually start off that award. The high school presents three awards, Teacher of the Year, Educational Services Professional of the Year, as well as the Princeton University Distinguished Secondary School Teacher Award. This is, uh, a way to recognize high school teachers throughout the state of New Jersey. Um, ultimately, we select the recipient at the high school or the nomination at the Princeton University, where that person ultimately could be selected as one of the very few teachers who's recognized at the undergraduate commencement exercises this coming spring for the class of two thousand and eighteen, uh, from the Princeton University Class of two thousand and eighteen. Speaking of that award, I'd like to congratulate one of our English teachers, also our outstanding forensics advisor, or I should say forensics coach, Ms. Merrick Horn. Is our Educational Services Professional, formerly a high school English teacher at Monville Township High School, now our student, is one of our two student assistants counselor, Ms. Catherine Lamar. And, uh, last but certainly not least, and arguably rounding out a clean sweep by the English department, so to speak, uh, our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Jennifer Killian Asen.
I know that Mrs. Marinello desperately wants to have all of our honorees come up, uh, to the front so she can take a good picture of you all, so please come on back down.
Just before everybody leaves, I think one more round of applause for the honorees. Thank you again, congratulations. I see that our student reps, they must have, uh, been unaware and changed the timeframe. It's a good excuse I made for you guys, right? Okay. We'd now like to hear any reports from the student reps. Jack, I don't know if we have my first deal of fame. Uh, Jack, go first.
Hello everyone. Uh, so recently, I wanna start with some sports.
Can you just give us a few minutes of people being all right?
Hello everyone.
Yeah guys, we moved the meeting up to six thirty from now on if you can make it, okay?
Seven thirty for you guys.
Oh, I wanna get a hero, they messed up this time. Okay, Jack, I want to start with you, please. Jack, we have two, and then we have two new board members here, Michelle Zuckerman and Joe Walker, our student, these two gentlemen are our student reps. Go.
Uh, to start off, we talk about some of the sports that have gone into high school. Uh, the boys' basketball team has found a lot of success this season until fall. Uh, they had a nine-one record, they're coming off a two-game win streak against Western Morris and Morris Town. Uh, they scheduled four road games in a row. Uh, this is their latest run against Morris Town, which we drew eighteen point eight by Lane Cassidy, and a near double-double by Joe Del Strio with nine points and ten rebounds. It appears that they won't be giving any luck. Uh, similarly, the girls' basketball team, Mexico Boys, with a nine road record, coming off a series of victories in the road, they've been four-one in the last five games. Uh, it looks to continue, they're prepared for the season, as Monville's Spartans and U-Chatt. Uh, the most recent victory against Kentucky, ten game players, Emma Wax, Jordan Strickland, and Vela Pito leading in double digits. Uh, some impressive stats to add to the mix are Jordan's seven steals and Dan Camp's six blocks. Uh, something to mention, uh, too recently, um, there were four high school basketball teams that were undefeated, uh, in the entire state, and two of them were from Ohio. Uh, so I thought that was really impressive. Uh, the boys' bowling team started the season unlost, but it's a memory far to pass. Uh, since their first match, the team has held a nine-game win streak. Uh, the nine in one game was not including the seven-os. Uh, thus far, the boys' hockey team has competed for thirteen games, and has still got nine wins, three ties, and no loss. Uh, led by captains Nick Mangann and John Kuzo, the team has produced nine games with four more goals scored. Uh, there are six more games ahead of the season, and I'm sure they're definitely going to beat a lot more goals, a lot more wins.
Moving on to clubs, this past weekend, the Monville Science Olympia competed at the annual regional competition. Three of our, three of our teams found success obtaining medals through their hard work, and they look to find even more success as states will around the next month. FBLA has also been working hard and hard to prepare for states in Atlantic City. States qualifiers are studying their materials and going over presentations to hopefully hit perfection. Although states is in march, the club and its officers have worked diligently to hopefully secure spots for nationals in Baltimore. DANKA also recently attended their regional competition last Wednesday. At the end of the day, a total of eight students have qualified for states, and they look to continue working hard for the next competition and the following month. Monville's MINEUN held a conference on globalization this past week. Members stayed after to choose their own country, learned the benefits and harms of working with other countries in an effort to globalize. It was an overall fun and educational experience for all those in attendance.
On moving on to events at the school, uh, following community's decision to recreate the Monville logo, students at MDHS had an opportunity last Friday to take a picture with the new logo and post it to social media to spread awareness. After participating in a brand-new community, a select group of Monville high school students were able to get input by a new brand, healthy apart, rebranding process. Just recently, a question, ASVAB testing to an undertaking theme due to the impending climate. The ASVAB is a series of multiple aptitude tests that measure different skills and abilities, provide information concerning student strengths and weaknesses. The test helps find possible placement in military or occupations. Uh, today was the deadline for seniors to submit their senior quotes. It was just like it was yesterday, uh, when I, uh, Dan and I were trying to figure out what steroids to take and how to get to a regular scheduled classes.
And moving on to the future, the Monville Forensics Team is hosting its annual middle school tournament this Friday. The tournament runs from three o'clock to approximately seven thirty PM, and middle schools around Monville and the other schools surrounding it come to compete in public speaking as well as debate. And of course, there's only nine more days until midterms. Students around the high school are making their flashcards, sharing their study guides, and preparing for the upcoming sleepless nights as the high school has its midterms. The only thing we look forward to are those four half-days. Ahead of next meeting, the second marking period will have just finished, and the third marking period has begun. Freshmen look to build the foundation of their high school careers, sophomores look to continue the progress from last, juniors are looking to close off debatably one of the hardest school years, and seniors are looking to spike, I mean, I mean, finish your last few months of school enthusiasm. Before we finish off, we would like to extend a warm welcome to the new elected board members. We know you'll make a great addition to the board, and thank you for the upcoming years.
Are there any questions for Eric, Jack? Did, uh, I hear, is the UTE Club having a big marathon again this year?
The volleyball marathon?
Yeah.
Yes, it's, uh, March night.
March night? I know they raised a lot of money last year, and some of us participated in watching rather than playing, but, uh, that's March night? Thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen. The next item on the agenda would be appointment of committees. Um, I'd like to thank all of my colleagues who have indicated by email or text what their requests would be for the committees. Most people did, I didn't have to call only one person. The committees that, uh, I think would be very, very balanced, I know are very balanced, and looking forward to them. The first committee is the Communications Committee. Communications Committee is made up by Karen Corollino, Michelle Zuckerman, and myself, and the new board member will also go on that committee when we get someone appointed. And the chair of that committee would be Karen Corollino. The Curriculum Committee, members would be Mr. Palmer, Mr. Modrak, Ms. Zuckerman, and Mike O'Brien, and that will be chaired by Mike Palmer. The Safety and Security Committee, members would be Karen, Corollino, John Morella, Joe Daughtry, and Dave Modrak, will be chaired by John Morella. Policy Committee, members would be John Morella, Mike Palmer, the new board member, and myself, and that will be chaired by John Morella. Finance Committee, members would be Karen Corollino, Mike O'Brien, Joe Daughtry, and myself, and that will be chaired by Karen Corollino. Uh, that gives us each committee, there's four members on each of the five committees. If there are any problems with any of the assignments that I've given, that I've made tonight, please feel free to contact me. The liaisons. New Jersey School Boards Association. Bear with me a second. New Jersey School Boards is Karen Corollino, Morris County School Boards Association, it's The Morris County Educational Services Commission, John Morella. Delegate liaison to the Drug Awareness Committee, the Mike Palmer. And the representative to the Mustangs as liaison, the Mike O'Brien. The liaisons to the various schools, Cedar Hill, bear with me, I'm up here. Cedar Hill will be Karen Corollino, Haildale will be Dave Modrak, Valley View will be Joe Daughtry, Mason will be myself, Woodmont will be Mike Palmer, Middle School will be Michelle Zuckerman, and the high school will be Mike O'Brien. As you know, at the present time, we only have one negotiating committee assigned as for teachers. When we start with the other two groups, they'll be appointed at that time. I thank you for your patience. I would encourage the chairman of each of the committees to meet, try to get it on a regular basis if possible, it's easier for your members and also the administration. And keep in mind that once the agendas go out, any of the committees, precision is being adopted by the whole board, in case the board has a question or wants to add something or to need something. This is a part of the meeting when we open the ballot for participation for items on the agenda. Are there any members in the public that would like to speak to the members to the items on the agenda? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to move the agenda. So, seconded? Okay? Any questions on the minutes? Any questions on receiving the gifts? And I would like to give a special thanks to Valley View School for their donation of $6,000 for the educational supplies. Any question on facilities and finance? That's letter K. Any questions on personnel, which is letter L? Any questions on curriculum instruction and technology, which is M? And there's no action on the policies I've laid for this program. Mrs. Slump, roll over please.
Mr. Morella.
Yes.
Dr. Modrak. Dr. Corollino.
Yes, the stain on M1, 15, 16, 17.
Mr. Dautry.
Yes, the next stain on K1, check number 87221.
Mr. O'Brien. Ms. Zuckerman. Mr. Palmer. Mr. Graff.
Yes, I would like to understand if one travel gave proof for me. You might want to also indicate Mike O'Brien is also aware of the travel on these, so. This is the one of the county meetings they have a lot. We'll take care of it, Mrs. Slump.
Yes.
Before we go on with the agendas, many of you now that are here, that tonight is the evening when we will be interviewing prospective board candidates for the one-year unexpired term due to the resignation of Mrs. Novy. We're advised by our council that we can do this in closed or open. We have decided to continue in open, so everyone can hear the responses. What will happen is the members will be, I'd like to say this word, sequestered in the conference room over there. And Diane, who is the assistant to the VA, once we come out, we ask you questions, we don't want everybody hearing what everyone else says. But once you've been asked questions and are finished, feel free to take your seat in the audience. Our plan would then be to go into closed session to discuss the candidates, and at the end of the closed session, to come out and to swear in, if appropriate, if they figured out, filled out legal papers to appoint a candidate. If the person has not filled out the necessary documents, then we would indicate who are choices, and then it would be their responsibility to get the proper legal work that has to be done going to our business administrator. Okay, all business, we have a discussion of the 1920 end. Dr. Roltar, you sent us out as an informational, we're not going to discuss it tonight. We're going to hold that off if you don't mind, due to the length of the interviews and how long it may take to go through them, we don't want to be here when the snow starts falling. So, public participation, this is your second opportunity to come and speak before the board. Any items that are not on the agenda?
Charlie.
Yes, Charlie.
Sure, I'm not sure with your necks what's going to happen next in the meeting, but I do want to mention that since the negotiation committee is already a seated committee, that we are meeting with the teachers' union on January 23rd, next Tuesday. We'll exchange proposals at that time, and we plan to break bread together. So we'll be having dinner together prior to the meeting.
Thank you so much Karen for your time. Anybody else in the board?
Yeah.
Michael?
Yeah, even though we haven't pointed the committees yet or the liaisons yet officially, I did take that upon myself, carrying over from last year for last week's DAC. We did speak of a couple of things. DAC does have a new president, Kerry Spitz, taking over for Joe Dautry. He stepped down as president, but is remaining on the committee. Couple of things we talked about are increased communications between the high school Saks and DAC. We have a DAC member who's in the school who's going to try to interact with the Saks and bring information back to DAC to utilize, hopefully to improve things in the both the middle school and the high school. Bring problems to DAC's attention, and also to try to increase the communication between the high school and middle school Saks. The middle schools here are trying to target probably than anything else right now. We're thinking about trying to get back the DAC dances. Something we haven't done for a couple of years, but it's always a very good thing to bring students in, give them something to do on Friday night, keep them out of trouble. And there is a committee who's going to be working on that, and I've already said they've been on only the liaison. I would like to spend some time working with them to try to bring these dances back. I think it's an important thing. And the other thing we discussed was trying to get the youth center back up to full capacity. And we have our meetings generally the second Wednesday of every month, and I'm happy to continue my role as DAC liaison as I've done for about the last ten years.
We are fortunate to have, I believe Joe Dautry is also on the drug awareness, you know? And I know Michelle Zuckerman is also a member of the high school PTA. I'm sure you can tell us if Mike is reporting accurately the meetings. But if you're not, if you can't make your mic, Michelle will be here for the high school liaison, okay? Anything else? Okay, I think at this time, what we'll do is, I don't know if we, and Mrs. Slump, can we tell the candidates what time we'll be here? Sorry? 8:15? Well, if we have any candidates here, why don't you just raise your hands? Okay, why don't we then ask you if you would mind going in the conference room over here with Diane? And you can appreciate why we're doing it this way, I hope. If you guys aren't candidates, you want to be candidates? I don't think stop watching.
Charlie, I would catch up to get in the room. Is there anyone keeping the door open?
I'm sure. But Casey, could you just shut that door and be online?
First candidate that's present on the list is Franklin Dixon.
It's Jason. Jason, why don't you sit right up at this table here, okay?
Franklin Dixon.
Franklin, I apologize. Franklin, as you know, there's quite a few candidates for this position. And what we're going to ask each of the candidates, two or three questions, okay? There's really no need for us, please, give us your resume, tell us about yourself. We went to Brownsville because we have that in the resume, okay? We are just going to ask you a few questions and try to be right on point if it's good, okay?
I'm sorry.
First question is, what do you see your role as a board of ed member?
I think I see myself.
You gotta speak into that essence.
Sorry. To be a board of board, I believe you're representing not only the school, you're representing the town and community. And you're also, I don't know, a side community as far as for the teachers and the superintendent and the CEO. You know, you're going to be helping guide your policies, you're going to help guide your vision of where you want the school districts to go to be where it is and where we want it to be down the road five and 15 years.
What specific skills would you be able to bring to the board?
I'm a numbers guy. I've followed the financial services for years. I think I could bring a level up to the board. And maybe bring a vision to the board, heavily invested in the town. I have three children currently in Cedar Hill, and I think, you know, integrity, just smarts, and everything else. It was already on the board, but I think I did continue that.
This question might seem a little redundant, but why do you want to be a board member this time?
I think the reason I want to be a board member at this time, and I do bother asking, I'm not a great public speaker, and I haven't gotten that many years. Is kind of to, one reason is to set an example for my children. You know, to show that you shouldn't avoid, necessarily, don't be on the sidelines. What works is get into the issues and volunteer and serve your community. And I think, you know, there's nothing more important to me than my children's education. So I think that's a big part of why I'm here.
And as you heard when I mentioned before, we'll conclude the rest of the interviews in public, and then we'll call this, and then come back and make a decision on who the replacement will be for the one-year term through next December 31st. For Mrs. Novy. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Hello.
Welcome, Bianca, sit down, relax. We have a few questions that we'd like to ask of you. First question is, what do you see your role as a board of ed member? I'm trying to get the speed to the mic, it's not that sensible, so please yell into it.
Well, I'm currently going to, I currently attend college at Montego State University, so my goal is to become a school psychologist. So being part of the board of education not only allows me to get experience of being within the school community, but also it allows me to give back to a community, a community that has given me so much. So anything that, being part of the board that will make the system better, being part of that as a whole, like the field activities and improving academics, stuff like that.
Okay. What specific skills would you be able to bring to the board?
I feel because I graduated from high school not too long ago, I feel my youth would provide a good perspective to the board. Because I've been in school recently, I have a feel of what goes on. So I think I would have a good understanding and contribute to that.
Do you have any other specific skills, and you only just graduated from school, what? Anything else you'd like to embellish on?
I'm sorry.
Any other skills that you'd be able to bring?
Well, I know I'm very good at writing, that's one of my academic strengths.
Okay. And finally, why do you want to be a board member? I know you might have given part of the answer in your other responses, but why do you want to be a board member?
Well, yeah, I kind of touched upon that before, because I want to be a school psychologist. I feel I strongly believe in the students' academic and mental well-being. So since that's my passion, I feel like I can express that through the board. Just like what we do to make the system work.
Okay. Thank you so much, that was easy, right? Thank you. Bianca, you can stay or you can leave, it's up to you. You can stay or leave. And who do we have here?
Catherine Halpern.
Okay. Catherine? Halpern? Thank you Catherine. Just try to speak into the mic.
All right.
What we're just going to do is give you three questions. May I ask you to expand upon why? Let me start with the first question, much easier. What do you see your role as a board of ed member?
I think a board of ed member has to take into account all of the aspects of what goes into running the school district. So you have obviously the concerns of the parents in making sure that our children get the best education possible. You have concerns of educators who want to make sure they have all that they need to be successful in their positions. And you also have to be sensitive and communicate to members of the community who may not have children in the school district, but are certainly stakeholders in the board's success as a, the school district's success as a whole, as it really does affect everybody in town.
Great. What specific skills would you bring as a board member?
Certainly through my own personal and professional background. I have a tremendous interest in education and children. And I would have been an active parent volunteer in the community ever since moving here in my professional work. I am a children's librarian and work closely with educators in Parsippany about ways that our public libraries can assist educators in their jobs better. And I would use both of those.
This last question, I should have covered part of your other responses, but why do you want to be a board member this time?
Public service has been a very important, big part of my life. I have always been an active volunteer. Recently, I've been looking into ways to experiment and take that to the next level. Several organizations which I was involved in heavily, I have sort of graduated out of. My children are a little bit older now, which gives me a little bit more free time. It certainly was a little bit more difficult when they were young, but now going to these meetings would certainly be a lot bigger, a lot easier. And I would just think that this is a fantastic way to serve the community.
Thank you, we didn't ask you a lot of value background because it was in your resume. As you said over here, Bianca, we didn't ask you that same question, so don't think we did out of your reservation. Thank you very much. Good evening, just make sure you speak into the mic, please. We haven't, we're not going to ask you to give us a lot of background because we saw that in your resume. We do have a few questions for you, and we did for all of the candidates. And I guess number one, what do you see your role as a board of ed member? And I guess number one, what do you see your role as a board of ed member?
The biggest part that I see as a board member that plays a bridge to the community. During my past experience with the board, I've been an active participant in community events, both in my volunteer role and as a board member, the President's at First Colorado, working with communications committees in Belton District for an and integrating the insights that our community members have into their vision for the school district and the school communities.
Thank you. What specific skills would you bring to the board?
Initial skills would be organization skills, communication skills, leadership skills, and past insights working as both a volunteer in organizations that work closely with the board, from the Third Alliance Council, uh, the Wallace Club, which works with student groups in the community, and, uh, past knowledge and experience about the functions of a board member and board governance.
Okay. And the third and final one is, at this point, probably gave some of these answers and the other two responses. Uh, why do you want to be a board member this time?
I've enjoyed serving my community in any capacity that I can over the past four years. And as long as I am a member of this community and able to be in the community, I will deserve in any way that I want.
Thank you very much. Good evening. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Good. I'm glad you're going to speak into the mic there. Okay?
Sure, my name is Caleb Calley. I go by Caleb.
It's the fifth one from the bottom. You have so many, Mr. Trump. We're not going to ask you anything about your background or anything. We have that from your resume, whatever that you have submitted. We do have three questions for you, uh, so you can give us information that would help us make a choice, okay? The first question is, what do you see as a role of a school board member?
I think the role of a school board member is to try to ensure that the students get the best education possible. I think that's the other role.
Can you expand upon that a little more?
Well, I think you have to, to address the challenges that, that the school system is facing or will face in the future. Uh, I think it might be one of the biggest issues that I think would come up is, at least in my view, opioid addiction in the state or in the country as well.
No, that's, that's good. What specific skills would you bring to the board if you were a board member?
Well, I'm certainly a team player. Um, I think I can bring another viewpoint to the board. And, you know, I've been practicing with you for several few years. I think one of my scoring suits has been staying close to the head of my adversary. Um, through, you know, planning early, strategizing well. And although there's no adversary here, um, I do think those skills can translate to a better education.
Thank you. And the third and final question, and you probably answered this to us lovely, great. Why do you want to be a board member?
I have three very good reasons. I have three young children in the school system, so I'm very invested and interested in getting the school system successful so that they can be successful. Um, but again, I also think one of the challenges that every school system in the state is faced, probably this one, um, is, and I mentioned it earlier, is the issue of addiction in the state. Especially opioid addiction. In my line of work, I see it all the time when I represent addiction centers. Uh, their business is skyrocketing. Uh, it's a big problem that I think is going to run nationally. Um, and I'm hoping that that is forefront of everything tomorrow in the school. And that a plan is developed to address that issue, uh, for the students.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Feel free to sit in the audience if you'd like. Good evening, Irene. How are you?
Good.
Good. Just speak close to the mic, okay, if you could. Uh, thank you for coming. Uh, we're not going to ask you a lot. This individual is listening here in the bottom of the sun, okay? Uh, we're not going to ask you a little bit about your background, even if we have that in your resume, okay? We have three questions that we'd like you to ask of you, so to give us information, which will make our decisions easier, okay? First question is, what do you see your role as a board of ed member?
My role as a board, uh, member, I see first of all-
Could you just speak a little closer?
First of all, I see representing a diverse population of Montego. There are more and more foreign-born parents here in Montego, and I'm one of them. I got my education and I moved here to Montego thirteen years ago. And I think that also my experience in a world language task force gives me this great opportunity to serve my community. I came to a conclusion that during my task force experience, uh, we managed to do something really important for the community and for the kids. And now my daughter is in middle school and she's experienced, uh, this wonderful, uh, new curriculum and new opportunities in life, and I'm absolutely happy.
Okay. Um, what specific skills would you bring to the board?
Uh, first of all, uh, I've got my PhD in politics, uh, in political studies, and I've also got a degree, master's degree, uh, in teaching and interpretation. Uh, I also have experience tutoring. Right now, I'm a Russian language tutor. As a result, you can see that I have both, uh, theory, theoretical experience and practical experience. So, uh, the other thing that I can bring to the board is just, uh, my European education because both my degrees are evaluated here in the US and so I'm also considered here a doctor and master. In case you choose me, I will write all of my documents.
Thank you. And the last question, spoke a little bit of this, why do you want to be a board member? Why?
I want to be a board member because to my mind, I can, uh, be part of my community and I need to have, uh, something to do with it to the board because I have different experience, uh, because of my background. And I'm a foreign-born American and I want to serve my community. And that is why I want to be with you. But at the same time, the fact that this position I need to fill on for one year, it will, uh, give you an opportunity to decide whether I fail into your board or not. Because in cases, I'm just not the right person. You can tell me and it's very difficult to say frankly, it's just, um.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hey, Michael Rapport?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure I have the right name. Michael, we're not going to ask you to give a resume of what you've done. You should conclude that with your letter. We are, uh, we do have three questions for you, okay? Uh, the first question is, what do you see as your role as a board member? And please speak close.
As, as a big part of the board, um, I see that as, uh, my first is overseeing the, uh, the administration, Dr. Wilkhar and the staff. Making sure things are moving along smoothly and to provide an encouragement on programs that we have to see in the district. For example, some of the programs that have come in very recently that really strike me as good and that actually encourage more, things like, uh, the Math Open P.I., which started out this year in the morning for the schools. And, and it's a fantastic type of program. And, uh, also to get to the talented program is something else that I see is good. And as part of the board, let's continue to encourage programs like that. Another one is, is the TruX program. So it, it goes beyond just the academics, uh, of the school day, but it goes to other skills that the kids can learn and, and grow with and, and take part of their, uh, their education. Like the TruX teaches how to start a business and then financial planning and, uh, competitive market and, and choose products, things like that. It's, it's skills that are not taught in math class, but still are very valuable for all of our kids to learn and to grow and, and to differentiate themselves as they, they move on and the rest of their lives, wherever they're sent to.
Which specific skills would you bring to the board as a board member?
Uh, I think one of the skills is that, uh, I, I worked at a fortunate boarding company and I've also worked at startups. Uh, of course, I manage, uh, multi-million dollar projects, especially in the education technology area and, and various other type of projects. So, but one of the things I would bring to the board is just an understanding, you know, of how large-scale projects work, especially with hundreds of employees and the problems that it presents. And bringing that understanding, sort of, issues and situations occurring. And they do pop up every once in a while. To understand then, uh, Dr. Wilkhar, who's staff is with, what the conditions to the board. And to understand what it means to be managing such a large budget and a large staff across all of the schools.
Thank you. And the final question is, you spoke to this already in your first two, is why do you want to be a board member? I think you spoke to him, but why don't you? Yeah, it was a little change today and I'm all.
Yeah, well, I'm, I have, uh, two daughters, fourteen and ten. And, uh, they have very different learning styles and academic profiles. Uh, so as part of going through, uh, we have attended Ballardview, because going through the elementary school system, I really had an opportunity to see what the school district has to offer for, uh, kids who are struggling in very academic areas and also kids who are doing very well. And I, I see a lot of the good things that the district's been doing. And I want to also encourage and keep the board and keep the district board on these various projects and, uh, create programs and other things that are available.
Thank you so much. Feel free to take a seat in the audience as we finish the process. Good evening, Sonny. How are you tonight?
Good, thank you.
Good. I'm glad you're speaking into the mic so we all can hear.
Okay.
There's, uh, we're not going to ask you about your background because you gave it in that letter or your brief resume that you submitted. We have three questions that we would like to ask of you. And first question is, what do you see your role as a board of ed member?
Uh, first of all, my, if I selected into this role, my, uh, my vision would be to provide a bridge to the parents and the Board of Education. Uh, I believe the students, uh, when they are actively engaged at home, they are a parter of it, so, um, my, that, that would be one of the things I, I believe, uh, would be helpful.
What specific skills will you bring to the board as an individual?
Uh, I have a technical background. Uh, I work for, um, Johnson &amp; Johnson. So I'm involved with a lot of community outreach programs at Johnson &amp; Johnson as well. Um, so I bring my experience, uh, working in different areas, uh, helping the community and giving back to the community, a lot of volunteer work that I've done over the years.
Okay. And the last question, some of you already asked it, but we'll give you another opportunity. Why do you want to be a member of this board?
Well, I've been, um, enjoying the work the board does and my kids go to, uh, Hidden Elementary. Um, and over the years, um, you know, I have seen the benefits that the board provides. And I believe now it's my time to take an active role and to help out, uh, give it back to the, uh, to the community. Um, and I've been, um, part of the community for some time, so now, um, I feel really strongly that, uh, we, uh, we, we all need to contribute in our, um, in our capacity as much as possible. Um, and this would be one of the areas, um, if, if I'm selected into this role, great. If not, I'll still continue to support the Board of Education.
Thank, thank you so much. Um, feel free to take a seat and, uh, as we finish the process, okay?
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Good evening. Good evening. Jason, right?
That's correct.
Jason, you can tell the mic so we all can hear you, Jason. Thank you. We're not going to ask you about your background because you have submitted some of that in your resume. We have three questions that we would like to ask of you. Uh, first question, what do you see your role as a board of ed member? What is your role?
My role, I think I would be able to offer a very charismatic, outgoing personality to, uh, the board and bring hopefully a plethora of ideas and insight into things that we could do to make the school system better than it is. Uh, I think I have some ideas already about ways that we could be innovators and proactive in using technology to try to better the schools and the education that our kids receive.
Thank you. What specific skills would you be able to bring to the board as an individual?
Well, I'm a physician, so I deal with people every day and working with people of all kinds, sick, healthy. And I think my ability to work with people of all kinds, uh, and I'm a good listener. Uh, I think I am very open-minded. I have, I think, a good set of analytic skills in terms of problem solving. Uh, I think those are the kinds of things that, from a skill set perspective, that I'd be able to, to offer.
Why do you want to be a board member?
I've always been involved in community service at, at multiple levels. You know, I've been coaching my kids since third grade and I've been with Conville since two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight. Uh, I'm very active at work outside my clinical responsibilities, spearheading committees, uh, leadership roles. Uh, involved at my synagogue in the town. So I'm always looking to be an advocate and be a leader in the community. I think I'd like to try to take my skills that I've acquired thus far and be something different and new. I think I'd like to try to take my skills that I've acquired thus far and be something different and new.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Feel free to have a seat. Good evening. Norman?
Yep.
Thank you very much for coming.
Sure, thank you.
We're glad you're speaking close to the mic so we can all hear. We're not going to ask you a little bit about your background because you supplied that with us. We have three questions that we would like to ask of you. First question is, what do you see as the role of a school board member?
I've been living here almost four years in Montpel Township. I've liked school systems, which is like great so far, so good. So that's why I decided to be here, like part of your community, actually.
Okay. What specific skills would you bring to the board?
I'm social, honest, and reliable, and a lot of people, so far, like I'd like to be your team member.
Okay. Why do you want to be a board member? Why do you want to be a member of the board?
Because I love to live in Montpel, and like I have three kids and they love so hard. So glad to be there in school. They're so respectful kids, so they're happy, I'm so happy to be here.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, Michael, how are you?
Good.
This is Michael.
Berwan?
Cool up.
Right.
Just speak close to the mic if you could, Michael.
Sure.
We're not going to ask you about your background because we have that in the letter and it's interesting you sent two of us, okay? We have three questions for you, as we did for all of the other candidates, and they're the same questions. And the first question is, why do you want, what do you see your role as a board member? What is your role as a board member?
I guess my role as a board member would be to assist the other members on the board to make sure that whatever the school students' needs are being addressed in the most efficient way possible.
Okay. What specific skills would you bring to the board as an individual?
Well, you have my resume, so you know, you know, I have a legal background, which involves a lot of contract negotiation. My daily business, now working on Wall Street, also involves a lot of negotiation, lots of number crunching, meeting with people, getting people to agree to things, meaning, you know, making people see other people's points of view to come to a agreement.
Great. And this, you might have answered some of this last question, is, why do you want to be a board member?
When I saw at the last election, there was three spots and only three candidates, I was a little disheartened. And so when I saw that now that the spot opened, I felt, you know, it was a good time to come in and try and contribute. I've been in town for twenty years, I have not been involved in a board yet. But there were one child in the school system, a freshman in high school. And it was really, you know, those two things, seeing only three candidates for three spots and then a vacancy that needed to be filled, so I felt like I wanted to try and fill it.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
We have a couple more to go, and then please feel free to take a seat. We had a few other candidates, but I guess they have decided to come, some responded, some did not. So I have a revendicated one candidate, is that right? Okay. What we're going to do now is entertain a motion going to closed session or discussion. This is Slump, can you read them, Mr. Slump?
Whereas the open public meeting app permits the Board of Education to meet in closed session to discuss certain matters, be it therefore resolved by the Montpel Township Board of Education adjourned to closed session to discuss the deliberation of board candidates, be further resolved by the Montpel Township Board of Education or reserves the right to discuss other matters rendered confidential by law should the need arise, and be further resolved, the minutes of the closed session will be made public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
So action, action may be taken or may not be taken. Because as I mentioned before, it could be some legal papers and after the sign, I have a respective candidate. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll try to be as brief as possible, but just going to pass some time to act to review your guess. It wasn't too long, was it?
Yeah.
We go back to another hour if you want. First of all, I would like to thank all of the candidates who took the time and effort to fill out the paperwork, to come in, to come tonight for the interviews. And on behalf of the board, thank you for your interest. Unfortunately, when you have eleven candidates, ten are not going to get appointed. So we are, we have selected unanimously a candidate. And I'll ask Mrs. Slump to read the resolution, and then I'll ask for a motion in a second place. First of all, I guess I should reconvene the meeting at nine twenty-three.
Resolved that the Montpel Township Board of Education approves the appointment of Michael Rappaport as board member for the unexpired term of January sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, through January first, two thousand and nineteen. Can I have a motion?
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Slump.
Dr. Cordelina?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Daughtry?
Yes.
Dr. Modrak?
Yes.
Mr. Morella?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Ms. Zuckerman?
Yeah.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
We cannot swear in Mr. Rappaport at this meeting. Please get in touch with Mrs. Slump. There are certain things that you have to do, get fingerprinted. I don't know if there's any other legal documents, but before you can be sworn in, either the two candidates that ran in November had to be fingerprinted. And until that comes back, you're not a board member. Once that does come back, we can then swear you in at a public meeting, and then you'll be able to sit up here on the desk. Again, thank you to all of you. I'd like to see some of you come out to meetings in the future. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve unless there's any other business of the board. Any other business? A motion to adjourn, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you again.